Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Town and Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Mike O'Reilly, the chairman. This is the regular meeting for November the 21st, 2024. It is 7:02 PM. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now call the rolls, starting on my right.
Dominic Smirglio, alternate commissioner.
Brian Todd, then commissioner.
Bruno Mayini, commissioner.
Robert Westland, commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate commissioner.
Kathleen Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator.
Thank you. Well, first off, with general public participation, if anyone is here that would like to address the commission on matters that are not on the agenda or likely to be on a future agenda, this is the time. Anyone here, please raise your hand and make yourself known. If anyone is online, no, there's no one online. There's no way. This is general public participation. If anyone is here to address the commission, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to the first order of business.
I'm sorry to back. Are we expecting Leon?
I just texted him. I didn't hear back from him.
Okay, if not, then we need to see.
It's only Dominic or Nicole.
You know who's on the list?
Yeah.
Dominic's up. Okay, let the record show Dominic.
Smirglio.
Smirglio is seated. First public hearing, SDP 2024-02, file number 160. That's 685 Main Street. This is a continuation from 11/7/24. Kathleen, do you have any new exhibit? We've been to the record.
Since our last meeting, we have a revised set of plans informed on our management report by Jay Edwards Associates, document dated November 21st, 2024, engineer in comment from the Town of Monroe, engineer James DeMayo, document dated November 21st, 2024, and planning and zoning administrator report by myself, Kathleen Gallagher, dated October, I mean, November 21st, 2024.
Was I saying October that whole time?
No.
Am I saying November?
Yeah.
And that is the conclusion of the exhibits.
Thank you. And for the applicant?
Thanks, Ryan.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners Chris Rusill, Commissioner Ross Hoss, and Detective. At 10 Satsco Home Road, Fairfield. It's obviously carried over from last meeting. Brief, we got kids bedtime coming up. So I was just going through some of the changes with this revised set that were made to address comments of commissioners and the public. The first is, actually, if I can switch the plan. There was a request for the truck turning plan, which is here to be extended. If you remember, it was kind of cut off. Again, this is to show a WB50 truck. Your regulations require to show a WB30, but our, my client is experienced with this type of retail store, and they get deliveries with a WB50 truck. So what we did here was we showed a truck turning plan, showing that on the site, and entering the site with the WB50 truck, the taxi into that loading area. If you remember, the previous truck turning plan, show it jackknifing, basically, turning kind of, you know, to back into it. We should show it going straight back. And that ties into one of the other changes that we're proposing tonight. And this is really that something to the commission's discretion. Under the regulations, you are allowed to defer parking if it's not, if the commission feels that it's not needed and it's not warranted. I spoke with my client after the hearing last time regarding the parking. My client owns five of these similar stores. He has developed many of them. And in his opinion, really, 30 spaces is more than enough parking for this building. Right now, we're showing 39, and 38 spaces are required under your regulations. That being said, you do have Section 6.1.11 of your regulations, which say that the commission can defer 25% of the parking, should you choose to do that. So in that instance, 25% of 38 would allow nine spaces to be deferred. And on this plan, if the commission so chose, designated spaces that we believe would be ideal for deferring to address kind of certain comments. So what you can see here, again, there's this northern parking area, and there's the parking area in the front along Main Street. We're showing four spaces here as potential to be deferred, as well as three spaces adjacent to the loading space that could also be deferred. In addition, Commissioner Mayini, to address one of your questions or concerns from the last time, we're proposing these two spaces to be deferred. The benefit of doing that would we could then turn those spaces into a snowshoe? And if I could flip to the, hold on, let me flip to the landscape plan to show you what that enables us to do. Okay, so Commissioner Mayini, you had said that you thought that with the snowshoe, that it kind of crowded the landscaping. What you could see there, I'll zoom in. Now, if we were able to defer those parking spaces, we could put the snowshoe basically where those parking spaces would have been, and then add additional room for the landscaping rather than moving it either closer to the building or closer to the light there that's at the end. So...
I actually believe last time you had trees in those spaces.
You had in those spaces, correct.
Those spaces on your, on your plan were designated as snow spaces.
Snow, oh, snowshoe. So what Matt Hoppett said at that meeting was we could shift them towards the building. And if I remember correctly, you had concern about whether or not there's room to do that.
Correct.
And what I think is nice about deferring these spaces is it creates the room for the snowshoe, but also more room for those trees, which again, our residential neighbors are to the south here and then to the west. So it gives a little bit more landscaping, a little bit more breathing room to those properties. And again, still providing what we know is will be more than enough spaces.
So those two trees that were in the shelf originally, you just basically took them and pushed them?
Well, actually, those stayed where they are, but because we have now the spaces, the snowshoe has moved up and taken over that area where the spaces are. And so that, that's, that's where the trees are actually in the same spot, the snowshoe that's just now moved up.
The snowshoe moved up into the parking.
And, you know, the next thing about deferred parking spaces is in the future, should there be a parking issue, and the commission feels that there's a parking issue on the site, they're deferred, the commission can tell the applicant to put the parking spaces in. But I think this is a nice way, as you can see, we can add some landscaping here, not only down here, but also up here off the side, you know, just adding the word landscaping. When we know just from experience that 30 spaces is more than enough for this, for this particular use. It also, again, for the loading area back here, now this loading truck is just going back. It won't jackknife or anything like that to have to fit into the loading space. So we think that that would be a significant improvement, but that is at your discretion. This commission has sole discretion over deferred parking. Then there was a question regarding hours. You may recall, so this, this building would get a delivery from a WB50 truck, but it's only once a week for that truck. It is not a lot of deliveries for this type of use with that size truck. I've got some clarification on the hours. So the store operates 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and its peak hours are 11:00 to 2:00 and 5:00 to 7:00. So again, under the regulations, this commission has discretion over delivery hours. You could choose to restrict deliveries to when it's not in operation at all. But there was some concern, I think, from the commission about it being too early. So I think this commission would also have the option to say that it would be delivered in non-peak hours, which would be every hour except 11:00 to 2:00 at night. So hopefully that gives you the information. I mean, it's a, it's a commercial zone. You know, this use is permitted in that zone. There's obviously commercials to the north of it where they get deliveries as well. So it's something that just goes along with, with being a commercial property. But luckily, the deliveries here are as minimal as it gets with what's one a week from this WB50. And we think we can, you know, deliver to this site and respect the residential neighbors around us.
Then... You never, you never told us about the once a week last time though.
I thought I did, but, but if not, yes. So it's the WB50.
That changes, obviously changes things.
Right, right. And I, that's why I think, in our opinion, the landscaping would be preferred over all this excess parking and excess asphalt. It's just, you know, it, it's only one time a week that that truck comes in there. Commissioner Smirliano? Swiglerino?
Wow. Wow.
Sorry, I should know by now.
Let's go down.
Yeah.
It was there. Okay, I have the timer, I should know. But you had questioned the fence and whether or not we could stay in it. I checked with my client, he can stay in the fence. Actually, you had cited the Jersey Mike's fence over at that property. And if you've been by there, that fence actually just got stained last week. So hopefully it looks better over there. But we can do the, we could do the same with this fence if, if you wanted to. And then I think that was all the comments. The only other, there was comment on the sidewalks, which I think I addressed last time. One of the neighbors didn't think sidewalks are necessary. But that's something you would have to waive, and I think you, I've always required it, so I don't see that happening. But just to address that comment, we, we are providing sidewalks with this application. So with that, oh, there's one more thing, I'm sorry. The, one of the neighbors commented regarding the handicap spaces. If you remember, in the last plan, they were shifted to the north. They were, they were on the northern end of that row. They asked that it be moved right in front of the entrance of that building, and we did that. That's, I think that's true.
Thank you very much.
Is there, is there an overhang on that entrance though?
There is an awning over the front of that entrance, yes.
I, I would just, and if for some reason this needs to happen as a field change, we can do it. I just want to make sure you have clearance coming up, because you do have to have some sort of turning clearance when you come into some of those spaces, and I don't know if there's columns associated with those awnings or things of that nature. So, okay.
No calls, no calls. And we would be open, somebody had mentioned regarding collars for safety purposes, and we can, we can do that.
Got a commissioners' questions, starting on my right. Commissioner Smirgliano.
No further questions.
Thank you.
How many more trees were you able to add, defer in the parking lot?
I don't know if Matt Hoppett was able to add trees or anything, just to create more, more microbeak for that. I believe it's not add any trees. We even had some plantings. We have plantings here on the ground. They're pretty set all the way around. I know, I know the big thing was that we made more room for these two trees right here. Thanks.
Oh, yeah. Come on. The WB50 is coming once a week, correct?
Correct.
Is there a specific day it comes, or is it, is it generally different? So one day it could be a, one week could be a Wednesday, one week could be a Monday, whatever, just depending on when supplies are needed at the store, correct?
Yes.
Besides that vehicle, what else, what other vehicles deliver?
There could be box trucks that come that deliver sodas and chips. Those tend to come more often than once a week, just because they go through quicker. But they're what you normally see around town, that are sodas and chips.
Okay, so what I see normally around town is like a Coca-Cola truck that's pretty big. Is that the one that's coming?
Coca-Cola truck, not sized for WB50. I don't know what size of Coca-Cola trucks are, but I don't think it's sized for WB50. It's not a W B.
So there are quite a bit of deliveries that are coming to the store.
How long, the WB30, how many times is it? You make it four deliveries, four deliveries, if you're lucky.
Do we, do we? You want to stand up and?
Sorry, I'm late for a task.
Just stop. Name and address, please.
By the way, yes. Gary Uplido, 55, and Pryor's Landing, Torrance, Connecticut. It varies by the store volume, Coca-Cola, Pepsi. They carry all the products these days, all the lines themselves.
Okay. I know the chip trucks are smaller. Those are, those are like a small box truck.
All the other, you know, things that go on the shelf, the pretzels, the nuts and those kinds of things. But probably the biggest would be Coca-Cola Pepsi. And they might be, I don't see, they, they see them being twice a week. Again, these aren't high-buying stores. They're just a general store with bath and beauty. You could go in for a pair of pants. They stack their shelves once a week, and they try to keep them fully loaded. I, we have two or three, and one of them was made, we developed up there. You know, we go almost every other day for stuff. And they rotate their stock maybe once a week. But, you know, their Coca-Cola truck is probably 30. It may not be that big, but it's, it's a good size. You know, it's, it's got a tractor rig in the back, which is probably 20 feet maybe, I'm guessing. Doesn't have a supercap, obviously, but it, it pulls in easy and leaves easy.
Okay.
They don't load through the front, by the way. Not supposed to. There's no guarantee they get a driver showing up. I shouldn't say Coca-Cola Pepsi have great drivers, but you know, when the rig pulls up, they're supposed to pull in one spot. If they don't, they manage to well, have a move. The big trucks at night during the week, if it's after hours, which is supposed to be, it's the park next to the door because everything crates in.
Okay.
Out of the roller.
And I'm assuming on the side there is where your, where that door?
That's where, that's where everything goes in.
You have a garage door there of some sort?
It's a double door.
Double door? Okay. Don't go too far there, buddy.
I learned the last.
I have that.
Yeah, then.
Oh, there it is.
All right.
Okay. Now, do we know what kind of general store? Does it have a name, or is it like, we don't know that yet?
I don't, I don't have a signed lease yet, but you're looking up a developer and ask them, wants to bring them to town. Probably know who it is. If you don't, it's general, I think you guessed retailer. If you guessed last time, that's probably who it is. I'm not allowed to say.
So it's like a Dollar General is what we're?
Similar, it's like that, very similar. I get in trouble if I announce who the tenant is before we sell them.
No, okay, because we, we.
It's a legal issue.
Okay, that's fine. Because we keep saying so many things, and we're trying to get an idea of, of what's going on in and out of this place.
Yeah, they're not, we're not, if it were a Dollar General, they're not dollar stores. You're probably lucky to find anything for a dollar, and they'd get 1942, I think, if it was that. But it's a general store. I mean, there's nothing you can't get in that store. It's just a limited quantity, that's all.
All right. Are we selling propane?
Yeah, they have to come in for a permit on that. They typically will ask for a permit on that. They do it themselves, but that will be a request. It's up to the town.
Okay. Right, so just have to understand that I think we put propane on the side of the buildings, or it doesn't matter? And it's got to be bollered off and all that kind of?
That is more building code. That's not necessarily zoning. Zoning, it's just setback wise, we just want to make sure it's, you know, not some side yard setbacks and things of that.
I'm actually in favor of the reduced parking. I think it's, I think for this situation, for what you're saying, again, there has to be a trust factor between both ends, right? You have to trust us. We have to trust you that you're going to do exactly what you said. And I, I believe if it is a Dollar General type store, I've been to a couple, and I've been to, I've been to a couple in many different states. There's generally not a lot of people that, that are there at one time. There's a lot of traffic throughout the day, meaning you probably see a more than you would your actual convenience store. But at one time, there's generally not a lot of people. So for me, the reduced parking, to add the, to add the extra landscaping, I think, is, is fine by me. With the added landscaping though, on the side, I know you had a trouble turning with the WB50. And now you're going to make it even harder, aren't you?
No, because now, because there's no spaces here, we're not even blocking spaces anymore, so...
I know you're not blocking spaces, but the turn radius is harder, isn't it?
I mean, this is the plan right here, so I, this just shows it going in here, back, and then just going straight back and loading. You know, last time we, it was turned and going into the door.
Correct.
But now we're just pulling back into this loading.
All right, so they're gonna, they're gonna pull in?
Straight back, straight back. There's no, it shows like there's four spaces here, but those are before deferred.
But they're not pulling in, they're gonna back in.
Back in.
So they're pulling in, in the front of the store.
Yes, correct.
And they're gonna back in on the side of the store.
Correct.
Hmm.
Once a week.
Once a week, yes, thanks.
For the WB50.
The WB50. Off-peak.
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 We made that difference. Now, I, I'm torn between, between off-peak being before the store opens or after it's closed.
Off-peak's before 11:00 AM then.
Off-peak would be before 11:00, or after.
Not between 11:00 and?
After 7:00.
Not, not between 11:00 and 2:00, and 5:00 and 7:00.
Yeah, typically, yeah.
So you guys?
Typically at nighttime.
Typically at nighttime? I definitely think it would have to be an off, I'm in favor of an off-peak type thing, but I don't know if I'm really in favor of after working hours type thing, so I'm good.
And again, just to Commissioner, with the parking, in a year, if there's problem there, you could just say, put the spaces in. So, so it is a, I understand it's trusting and us stuff, but you have the ultimate trump card, and then you could just say, no, we, we take it back.
No, I, that's, that's probably the reason why I do agree with the reduced parking spaces, is that we do have the ability to go back. I mean, I hope this business does phenomenal, and I hope it flourishes forever. But in the, in the case, God forbid it doesn't, and something else comes in and they need the spaces, we have to have that ability. So for now, to go with a reduced spacing and allowing it, allowing to have those spaces available at a later date, it's great.
From the parking numbers I've heard, it'd probably be the other direction.
No, you probably, you probably get away with 25 spaces. You know what I mean? I totally understand what's going on, but I'm just saying that to have the ability to, to go about and add those spaces at a later date is the only, is the reason why we, it would make sense to do this.
All right, yeah, I don't see it for all reason or restricted deliveries. I mean, there's very few deliveries here, much less than most of the abutting neighbors and all the businesses up and down 25. Most of them don't have restrictions on their deliveries. And typically, these drivers are going to work with what's going on in the parking lot at the time of, of the day, whether it's busy or, or not. My only question is that the current plan shows that you only have bollards in front of the ADA spots. Is that what the, the plan will be?
Then right now, that's what we're showing. Yes, right, just in front of the handicap spots. That's, the concrete or the sidewalk comes down to the, to the asphalt there, so it's, it's a walk-up. The bollards protect from the cars going up the sidewalk. Other way, other than that, the sidewalk goes up to a French.
You do have a curb on the rest of the French. Okay, yeah, that's good. That's all I have. That makes sense.
How many parking spaces again are you asking for?
Well, so there's 39 on the plan. And the commission has the right to defer nine, but that's actually off of 38, which is the requirement. We're only requiring 38. We're showing 39. So technically, you could, the commission could choose to lower it down to 29. What we're showing here would take it down to 30. Would take it down to 30, yes.
Okay.
And again, the commission could choose for the four that are up, you know, on the very northern end, and the two down, but leave the other three. I mean, it, you know, it's entirely at your discretion.
That's how it goes. I, I agree with the other commissioners on that. No, I think all my other questions and concerns from last week were answered. I agree, I think after peak at night would probably be my preference, but I want to be careful and courteous with the neighbors that we're not having deliveries 10, 11 o'clock at night. If we could do something a little more between the 7:00 and 9:00 to be courteous to the neighbors, I think that would, at least in my preference. But yeah, no other questions.
Thank you.
Kathleen, it looks like all of your comments were satisfied. Do you have any other comments?
The only other items is, town engineer James DeMaya wrote a memo this morning, basically summarizing what has already been discussed here, which is that there's just concern about deliveries and hours of operation, which you guys have already asked all the questions, I believe, that he already had concerns with. And then the only new additional item had to do with the deferred parking, which again, I'm agreeing with Attorney Russo that has outlined it under Section 6.111. It talks about that the commission, the practice exercise that at the discretion of the commission, whereupon 25% of the designated parking is not constructed and is placed in a landscape lawn, subject to the provisions, that the owner of the premises may be required to construct said parking if it is determined by either the commission or owner that circumstances require such construction. So yes, we agree that they can go down to nine spaces. If the commission does want to do that, we just want to make sure that per the regulations, prior to a certificate of zoning compliance, you, we would ask for a covenant to be executed, guaranteeing that the owner will provide the additional spaces. If the zoning enforcement officer, upon investigation of the actual use of the parking spaces at the side of the deferred parking, recommends to the commission that the approved be modified or revoked. And that's in our regulations in order to have. Staff takes no objection to the deferment of the parking, as well as the way that the turning study is being shown to back in. The way it was kind of jackknifed in, the reason we had asked for those turning studies, we didn't believe that could actually could occur. They didn't have a loading dock proposed either way, so logistics of them using that entire loading space in order to load, staff takes no objection to, to that means nothing.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the public now. If there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to address the commission on this application, please raise your hand. Once more, if there are any members of the public here tonight or online that would like to address the commission on this application, please make yourselves known. There's nobody online. Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to the applicant. What would you like to do at this point?
I think that's it. That concludes our presentation, and just going, you know, this is a site development plan. This application satisfies all your site plan standards. So for those reasons, we respectfully request approval of this application.
Thank you very much. That will close this hearing. We'll move on to deliberations. So this is the only application we have for deliberations tonight, so we'll go right into that. Commissioner Smirgliano, you're part of the deliberations tonight. I get the impression that we're leaning towards approval with the conditions as mentioned, off-peak hour of loading and deferring the nine parking spaces. Anything else? Nope, not for me. Nope, all right, good, then you want to?
So what, so large delivery truck shall only make deliveries between the hours? Or you want to say shall not make deliveries between the hours? How does, how do you want that written?
Only during peak hours.
Non-peak.
Non-peak hours. Shall?
To 11:00.
Make deliveries.
7:00 to 9:00 in the evening.
Okay, shall only make deliveries?
Three to five.
Outside?
They could do, they could do two to, two to?
Peak hours.
During the peak hours, because then if something does come after hours or before, like 8:00 o'clock?
I think the, I think the concerns that we had earlier last time is you were concerned about it going too early. So yes, it's on off-peak hours, but then it's coming at 5:30 in the morning when residents are sleeping. So that's the, kind of the question of, if we just say not during peak hours, that still gives them?
Specify the actual hours.
Where are the actual hours?
The deliveries can be between the hours of 8:00 in the morning and 9:00 at night. They just can't be between 11:00 and 2:00 and 5:00 and 7:00, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so between? So you only want them during?
Work hours.
During the work hours, okay.
And then we'll defer the nine parking spaces.
Sure, shall.
Mentioned prior.
So I'm just going to actually spell it out. Large delivery trucks may only make deliveries between the hours of 8:00 AM and 11:00 PM. Large delivery trucks may only make deliveries between the hours of eight AM and eleven PM.
No, they're only open till nine.
I mean, eight, eight AM and eleven AM, sorry, eight AM and eleven AM. And then was it two to five, two PM?
And then seven to nine?
PM and seven PM and eight PM?
Five.
Nine.
Is it open till nine?
Nine.
Nine. Alright, large delivery trucks should only made between the hours of eight AM and eleven AM, two PM and five PM and seven PM and nine PM.
Okay.
Any other?
And then, uh, posting a bond in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. And then prior to the certificate of zoning compliance, a covenant shall be executed, guaranteeing that the owner will provide the additional spaces if the zoning enforcement officer, upon investigation of the actual use of the parking spaces, at the side of deferred parking recommends to the commission that the approved deferral be modified or revoked. So that's three, three different conditions, the posting of the bond, hours of operation and the covenant. Just to be clear on what you're voting on.
I'll make a motion to approve SDP twenty twenty-four zero two, file one six zero six eight five Main Street with said conditions.
Okay. Second. Motion by Condon.
Second.
Second, Mayne, you need, call the roles thing on my right.
Smirgiano, yes.
Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Laney, yes.
Westland, yes.
Motion passes, congratulations. Okay, we're gonna go to pending minute meetings, eleven, seven, twenty-four. You have the meeting minutes, if it's on you. Shall attain a motion to approve.
Okay, Mike. Mike, let's make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from eleven, seven, twenty-four, as drafted.
Motion by Mayne. Second, Smirgiano, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Smirgiano.
Smirgiano. Smirgiano.
Bushino.
Butchered today.
Your name's gotten butchered today, brother, I'm sorry.
That's, you have to kind of fix it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, stand? It's unanimous, meeting minutes are passed. Okay, we have, uh, zoning planning matters. Kathleen, what brief us on that?
Uh, we should have in your packets, uh, a memorandum, uh, to myself from the Conservation and Water Resource Commission about four sixty-seven and four eighty-five Pepper Street landscaping. And they have concerns that the landscaping has not been installed on site. Um, I think we've talked about this at a couple of meetings past. Uh, Wetlands has also talked about this in the meetings past. Um, I am trying to currently set up a meeting with the owner and the owner's representative to basically have somebody walk me through where the status of the project is. Um, from our research, they, this was approved, um, in the past for, um, a crushing facility, like a physical building as well as storage base in the rear. There's very clear conditions on that, the stock piles can't be more than fifteen feet, the crushing's supposed to be done indoors. They have not pulled a building permit, um, they did do a bonding and a bunch of other items before I was hired that we do have record of. Uh, but there's a little bit of confusion on basically where they are in the process, what they're using as operations, what they're allowed to be using as operations. So we're trying to get everybody together, um, to have that meeting, um, and go through it that way. Some of this approval was before my time, so I don't have the like, on the ground knowledge. So that's why we're trying to get everybody together to figure out where we're at, um, and where they're going, what their plan is for the next couple of years.
Are you gonna do a site walk or visit?
Eventually, yes, but I need to know what I'm looking at. So like, we agree the piles too large. That is the pile part of construction, is the pile part of operations, is the pile part, you know, like, there's too many questions of what we're looking at. So that's why somebody needs to come in and we need to sit down and figure out where you're in violations of the conditions of the approval, from what we know and have seen, um, just as it relates to construction and, and yeah, what you guys are planning to doing. It's a really great line. They're using something for construction, it's just temporary, or if they're using something as they are operating, which is outside of what the final conditions of the.
Right, right. Where do we go from there, because it's obviously stockpiling.
If they're doing it as part of operations, they need to reduce the.
There they are. Okay. And so you're still waiting for a meeting?
We're still waiting for a meeting. I did talk, the owner's rep, Solly, uh, who came in and presented the application. Um, the engineer that had been as part of that project is no longer, uh, working there. So there's been a little bit of a change of staff of who's speaking over that project. So, um, we are coordinating to make sure whoever is in charge with getting up to speed is the one that will handle this moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Um, do we have any correspondence? Chairman's report, uh, I've directed the staff to look into increasing the number of over fifty-five, uh, housing units in town. Looks, it sounds like there's a great need for that. Is there? Yes, there is. We only have about three hundred at this point.
Like three twenty-five.
Three hundred, and we've had many applications, uh, coming in and inquiries. Um, and, uh, not only that, but when we get applications for apartment buildings, at least we'll have something, an alternative to offer the, them, to do a fifty-five and over. And we just, you know, we didn't really deny, but we had someone go to single-family houses who wanted to do this, um, not too long ago. So we'll talk, I'd like to schedule a, um, subcommittee meeting to talk about this, once you do some more research.
Sure.
So that's.
We should for sure talk about that.
All just thinking about.
I believe our P O C D called for a need for it too, so.
You do.
It's within lines with that, so.
Good.
Any commissioner reports?
One section of the P O C D you wrote.
Wrote it, dude. Please talk.
You were here that much.
Were you paying attention?
Staff report. Kathleen?
Nothing at this time.
Uh, do you want to schedule a subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, let's schedule a subcommittee. So, so there is the potential that since we voted on sixty-five Main Street tonight, we might not have a December meeting. Um, I don't know of anything that is trying to come in the next two weeks. I mean, there's, there's whisperings of certain things, but I don't know if they're gonna get in, um, for the next meeting. And at the very least, if it's a special exception permit, they wouldn't be able to open a public hearing.
But that's our only meeting set up for.
And that's our only meeting set up. So there is a potential to use that same evening for a subcommittee meeting if we don't actually have anything on the agenda. Um, or we can schedule it for a different day and then we can just schedule the, um, planning zoning, we can cancel the planning zoning meetings if there's nothing on the agenda.
Uh, just a, just a, a personal thing, I would prefer if we move these subcommittee meetings off of Mondays.
I think that was the staff request, but I don't, don't know if it was you or a prior planner that wanted Mondays.
Uh, for, I don't really have a preference, I think we had just talked about, um, I have a little kid at home and so sometimes the evenings get tough before you have a subcommittee and then something.
I would say we'll leave it at early, at five-thirty.
Yeah.
I'm just asking for not a Monday or Tuesday, for personal reasons.
I think the other day's like two year. And we don't do Fridays, so you're, you're down to two days.
Yeah, or Saturday or Sunday. Surely down to two days.
One thought I had thought of, what if we were to do Thursdays before our regular meeting? So that we're already here, Kathleen's already here. Just do a five-thirty subcommittee, have time to grab dinner and then start up a regular meeting at seven.
There's not enough time to grab dinner.
He's trying to help those of us that are juggling numerous things.
Yeah, but subcommittees is not as formal, so we could bring food to the subcommittee if we had to. Cause you're not doing, you're not gonna do it in here.
I don't have one strong preference, one way or the other.
I won't make it work either way, I just would prefer it off of Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, Kathleen, how about Wednesdays at five-thirty? How does that look?
But don't change it just for me, just make sure that everybody can attend now, that's nice. You know, I don't know if that works for you.
It doesn't matter to me what kind of day, as long as.
Wednesdays at five-thirty?
I can't.
Yeah.
Five-thirty.
Cannot do Wednesday?
Yeah, I have two things with my kids.
Why don't we try Thursday then? How, how does that sound to you?
Okay.
Thursday?
So.
Yeah, I mean, this, the fifth is the next, uh, meeting, right?
Yes.
Fifth I can't do, cause I already have a, I book things at night, because I know I'm gonna be in a meeting. But after that, I'm fine with it. The fifth I can't do, but the nineteenth.
We don't have a meeting that.
You don't have a meeting on the nineteenth?
If I can't do.
For the holidays. Or we could do, I mean, we could just do the twelfth.
Is it easier for everyone just to do it on a Monday?
It doesn't matter.
Not really, to be honest.
Doesn't matter. Alright, now let's, do you want to try the twelfth?
Wait, we don't have a meeting on the nineteenth?
We don't have a meeting on the nineteenth.
Not, schedule it.
I hope you hear the twelfth.
And then we might not have one.
I'd do the nineteenth then, if people were already expected to be here on the nineteenth and would do subcommittee on the nineteenth, let's do the nineteenth.
I don't know, that works for me.
Five-thirty? Alright, December nineteenth, five-thirty, next subcommittee meeting.
Oh, that means Ryan can attend.
He's not, he's not on the committee.
You just said.
Yeah, I'm not on the subcommittee. Please, if we get any more.
Not to be rude, but Nicole's not on the subcommittee.
Yes, I am.
Democrats. That's one.
I was invited.
Who?
Mr. O'Reilly.
He is so good at his job, it's not even funny.
Five-thirty?
Are you invited?
Bill Porter, baby. Rest his soul. He got mad at me and put me on.
Alright, December nineteenth.
He literally yelled at me.
Five-thirty.
It said you're on.
Okay. Chairman, obtain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mayne.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The adjourn, it is seven forty-three PM.